Welcome. Good afternoon. This is the Historic Preservation Commission meeting. It's Thursday, August 2nd, 2018, and the time is 5:05. Could we please have roll call?
Commissioner Kargnadi.
Here.
Commissioner Doom.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan, he's absent. Madam Chair Shire.
Here.
Commissioner Vartanian.
Here.
Thank you for.
Okay, item two on the agenda is the posting of the agenda. It was posted on or before Monday, July 30th, 2018, on the bulletin board outside of City Hall. Item three, we have the approval of the minutes from June 21st, 2018. Were there any comments or corrections that have not already been made?
No, I move to approve.
Okay, second.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Kargnadi.
Yes.
Commissioner Vartanian.
Yes.
Commissioner Doom.
Yes.
Madam Chair Shire.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion to approve the minutes.
Item four is oral communications. This discussion is limited to items not part of this agenda. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. The commission may question the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. And under this section, I do have one comment card from Sean Bressel.
Thank you, Madam Chair Women Shire and members of the commission. I am Sean Bressel, and I'm here on behalf of the Casa Verdugo Historic District Committee, as well as the South Cumberland Heights applicants. And we're here to celebrate the first birthday of these two historic districts. What these two historic districts would really, really like for their birthday is a survey of the historic district. Because you approved these historic districts and found them preliminarily eligible to be historic districts a year ago this month. And then we've, both of these districts submitted our survey petitions, which you certified in December, and we have been waiting since that time for a survey to be done. I understand the RFP is being worked on, but we would come back to you, as we did last month, and say, we really would like to see this process move forward. These two historic districts would like nothing more for their first birthday than to see that RFP go out on the street. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Happy birthday.
We might have a belated surprise for them.
Oh, good. Belated surprise birthdays are always good.
Yeah, as long as the belated range is reasonable.
Okay, after no more oral communications, we have item five. Comments from commissioners. Are there any comments? I just have a couple of comments for staff. Just if we can put on upcoming agenda, the historic district brochure. Unless I missed it, I don't think we've been presented that yet.
As soon as it's ready, it's on your way, on its way.
Okay. And then if we could also have updates on 1106 Rossmoyn Mills application? Where that is in the process of the owner?
Yeah, I met with the owner a little while ago and can relate to you what his goals are. I think you might need another site visit.
Okay.
So we can set that for next month.
Okay. And then also maybe an update on the Valley View new garage. I'll have to give you the add, address, I think it was Valley View.
The one on Kenneth 750?
Hillcrest. Thank you.
On Hillcrest?
Yeah, sorry, Hillcrest.
Oh, they're moving within their schedule.
Are they? Okay, great.
Do you need an update, or?
That's a good update.
They have a construction deadline by the end of the year.
Okay, good. There's, and they're still?
Yeah, they have permits and.
Excellent. Okay. Great, that's it. Okay, any other comments?
Yeah.
Okay. With that, we'll go to item six, comment, I'm sorry, old business. So 6A is 1450 Royal Boulevard. This is a Glendale Register nomination and Mills Act application. And this is continued from a special meeting on September 29th, 2016, and a meeting of October 19th, 2017.
Okay, well, before I introduce the applicants, I will give you just kind of a recap on where we are. At both of the previous hearings, the commission has reviewed this house, which I think everyone is in agreement is a special house and looks really great from the street. But there was concern among the commission members about the work that had been done relatively recently in the backyard. There's construction of the pool and creation of hardscape between the house and the pool area, and then some terrace areas. And the commission at the first hearing asked that that area be kind of revisited, redesigned. There's also concern about the tile at the pool. And the commission at the first hearing asked for that to be revisited by the owner and to return with kind of a plan to kind of make it more in keeping with the commission's goal for what backyards of houses like this often look like for Glendale Register properties. At the second hearing, the applicant came back with a report from the, from Historic Resources Group, saying that the house as is was eligible for the Glendale Register, and the owner was trying to make the case that even if work wasn't done, the house is still eligible. Once again, the commission, with more specific guidance, asked the applicant to return, continued the hearing and asked them to return with a proposal that could be included as Mills Act conditions for the commission's consideration. And that's where we are today, tonight. At the, at the second hearing, the commission specifically asked for four kind of conceptual goals for the new landscape. The first was that the rear pool decks and landscape areas be redesigned to better reflect the style of the house and the existing landscaping of the front of the house. The second was the goal of generally softening the appearance of the existing planners, which have a lot of exposed stucco surface and were kind of more hard than soft. The third was to reduce the amount of concrete at the area between the house and the pool to increase the amount of landscaping. And the fourth point was to redesign the diamond-shaped tile panels at the wall behind the pool. And the commission voted unanimously at that hearing to ask for the applicant to come back. So the hearing was continued, and we're here tonight with a proposal from the applicant that they believe addresses these issues. Staff also believes that they address these issues, and there's still room for nuance and readjustment. In general, staff has always felt that even in its current condition, this house is eligible for the Glendale Register. So we still support this nomination, and we still support the Mills Act, but at the commission's direction, since the focus is on the backyard, I think tonight's discussion, you'll, we'll need, we'll need the commission to vote at the end of all of this on whether this is eligible for the Glendale Register, and if you support that application. And then in terms of the design of the rear landscape, I'm presuming that this would be then, whatever determination you make tonight, if you're inclined to put this on the register or to recommend this go on the register, that we would be adding very specific Mills Act conditions, either based on the proposal that you're looking at tonight, or with any modifications that the, that the commission would like to place on it. So I do have some images that I'm sure the applicant will also want to address, but we'll just. Can we get the light of the screen to the left one? Nope, the other one. Not all of them, though.
Not all of them.
Yeah.
The one you just turned on?
Yeah.
Flip that, and then, yeah.
There we go. It's a little bit better. This is the existing condition at the rear yard. The left photo, you can see the, the concrete deck area behind the house. And then in the right-hand photo, you see the tile panels specifically that were called out by the commission, as well as the kind of landscape area and the planter behind the pool. The proposal is to remove sections of concrete at that, at the, the area between the house and the pool, and then to, and to install landscaping in those four spaces, which are noted here as space C and D. And it's a total of 32 and 16, 48 square feet or so. And then there will also be re-landscaping proposed for the existing planners. When we looked at the landscape palette, we thought the plants were appropriate. It seems that the goal of the owner and the designer was to create kind of a layered effect, where there'll be taller plants, there'll be climbing plants, there'll be trailing plants, and then also kind of more ground cover with some trees that kind of provide some verticality and cover as well. Here are some renderings showing what, what the proposal should look like once, once everything's installed and planted. And ultimately, the owner would rather not adjust the tile if the commission weren't inclined to accept the diamond-shaped pattern at the back of the pool, but has proposed this option to show what this would look like if the tiles were maintained in kind of a square pattern. This actually takes it from three tile panels to five, and the center three are where there, there are little water jets that shoot out into the pool, which is the existing condition. So staff, staff believes that the proposal meets the commission's general goals. And like I said, any further discussion will help, help refine that to your, to your satisfaction, I hope. So that is what staff has for you.
Okay, are there any questions for staff? First, let me open the public hearing. Open the public hearing, we have two speaker cards. First is Scott Smithson.
Thank you. Well, for hearing us back for a third time, didn't realize at the second meeting that most of this was regarding the landscaping plan and the hardscaping plan on the back of the property. I thought it was more about the conditions on why the pool is elevated into the lower space. Very much to what Jay has said and has brought to, brought forth, is that we've looked very specifically at the amount of space that is in the back of the house. And one of the things that we took into account is the limited amount of space between the house and the edge of the jacuzzi. It is only 12 feet, and that is basically the entire entertainment space between the house and the pool, which is notated in the book. You will see that, that it's very detailedly left sketched out for you, so you can see the dimensions. We took out 16 square feet, or, excuse me, two sections of four foot by four foot to the left and the right. The right is to between the, the service porch and the gate to the backyard, which, and the other side is between the house and the service into the breakfast room, entryway, and the staircase up to the guest house, effectively reducing the amount of space in which to entertain to, to being about 12 by 20, which is not a significantly large space. It's a relatively small space in reality. Also, you did not like, in the previous comments in section, you did not like the tiered L-shaped steps and they're, and how broad they were, and then they felt that they were too modern. We have decided to remove the returns on the lower step and a portion of the first step to soften up against the edge of the pool on both sides. There is a limited amount of space that you can do that and still maintain the integrity of the pool and integrity of the steps and everything else. So that's why we've, those are as limited as size-wise as we can, which are approximately two foot by four foot. All of the landscaping plan and all the plants that are in there, the portion of the plan that is between the pool and the rear wall has already been partially completed. And in the original photographs, you see that there, there will be some additional things that haven't survived the drought in the last couple of years that has made this an extremely tough time to keep things alive back there. But what we have tried to do by the photoshopped pictures is to look at what we are putting in there and maturing them up three to five years in advance, so that we can see what it's going to look like in the long term. And the idea has always been to soften the large rear wall that was already there that we had to work with because it's holding up the hillside. It was not part of the original work for the pool. That was there in advance. We've added additional landscaping to the large planter that is to the west of the pool area. The rest of it is basically the deck surfaces between the guest house and the pool. The areas on both sides of the pool at the pool deck level are relatively small, approximately four by 16 on each side. So there really isn't any way to reduce that in any way with planters. But we do have the option of putting additional, and they show those in the drawings, putting additional plant materials in pots in those areas. The only reason why we can't dig up the, the deck is because it voids the, the work, the wall work. And then the, and the footprint of the wall is actually quite deep. It's about 18 inches out from there. So there's, you know, in front of it, I could dig 18 inches away, and I'd still be on top of concrete. I'd just have prettier concrete than exposed concrete that we would have. And anything beyond that, I'm at the pool bond beam beyond that. So the bond beam's approximately 15 to 16 inches deep, and I have 18 inches of wall on each side. So there isn't an awful lot on those upper areas that I can make smaller. Using anything permeable, such as, that was stuck in the, that was part of the original conversation at our last meeting back in October, is, yes, I guess we could have chosen to put in flagstone or something like that and left areas of, of void in there. But again, with the amount of concrete that's underneath all of that, there isn't an awful lot in which we could plan, plant, and make pretty beyond that. So the whole area is basically, that we can work with is the lower deck space, which is what we've tried to do. I understand that there, in this world, there's chocolate and vanilla in the world. My client actually likes the diamonds on the back wall. It was a specific choice. We could have gone with the squares, but we specifically chose not to because that's what they liked. So we understand that, you know, there are things that one person may like and another person may not, but that's how we chose to deal with it, even though we have, do, do have beautiful wrought iron spouts inside there that fit the house. We also think that we have done a good job of taking what is a modern application, because obviously it was put in in 2015, and we've attached it to a 1920 Spanish house. We haven't tried to make it look immediately like a 1920s house, but we haven't made it look so modern. We could have gone in a Louis Barragon type of way and painted all the walls in mustard and bright terracotta and all of that, but that was not the, what the client asked for. The client asked for a subtle backyard that matched the rest of the house. And that's how we attached and attacked this program. So at this point in time, we have added new planters. We're going to, up against the house, they're four by four. We will be bringing in irrigation because we'll be able to get underneath the house and bring irrigation to that. We will have to tunnel underneath that to the step points, because we can't cut up all of the pool deck without adding a bunch of really unattractive saw marks and stuff. And we don't really want to have to replace it because the, the decking was put in in a specific color. And if we poured a different time, we may not get the same color, and then it'll really look like a problem. And so we will be tunneling underneath the pool deck to get irrigation to the step portions in that space. We did give you an option for the back wall, which was an option we considered the first time around. The reason there are not five diamonds on the back wall instead of just three is that, as much as I'm a fan of symmetrics, can't be symmetrical in the backyard because the backyard's lopsided to one direction in size. So the diamonds are centered on the pool, but putting five diamonds across, the left one is kind of off-center, and the far right one is, really looks off-center, and the diamond actually makes it very obvious. Where when we put them in in squares, it's not quite as obvious, but we did show you that that's what we would do when we put in the five, because there are larger blank sections of the tile work on both sides, which we did not stucco. We actually did do that wall in tile. And at this point in time, one of the other things that came out of the meeting in October was, Jay, if you could go back to the original shots of the backyard, the upper terrace shot in the upper left-hand corner, looking down at the pool at the house, there were numerous times that this photograph was referenced to, and then they reference to, and it's not in this sequence, but I'll just have to remind you of it, is of the corner shot of the house on Moreno from the front yard. And that the, and we jumped from one picture to this picture and back again and again. And it was like, this is so lovely and lush, and this is so stark and harsh and unattractive. And that comment came up on more than one occasion. I would like to point out to you the large drawing on the left over here where there are three areas knocked out. That is the entire pool deck square footage. And the little wings and the little square, you can see where it goes around the pool. We actually can get four full concrete deck areas in the front yard alone. And if I take off the little portions that, you know, the upper ones on the upper pool deck there, I can get five lower deck pool square footages in the front yard. And so it's a very unfair comparison to look at a front yard that is, you know, three or five times the size, that has 25 years' worth of lush landscaping in it, to a much smaller space that was done in 2015. And the space, you know, as stark as it may be in this photograph, and I will admit that it's stark, it was done because we haven't put in any of the pots or had any, finished any of the other landscaping. And we did a first pass at landscaping. And with the new plan and what we have added and what shows up in the Photoshop thing, so you could see what we're going to be doing by adding the queen palm trees to soften up against the house, and we don't have such a large flat surface and everything else. We believe that we've made a case that we have covered almost all of the options that you asked for and still been able to leave the homeowner with a viable space in which to entertain from. So that's my pitch at this point in time. Do you have any questions of me or anything else that you would like to ask?
Does anyone have any questions? I have a question.
Okay.
How are you addressing the stark concrete upper terrace?
Oh, the very one across the top of the thing? That's part of the upper retaining wall space, and there's, there's tiles, there is drains in it and everything. And at some point in the future, the client wanted to tile that space in with Sateo tiles. On Saturday of this week, the lower staircase to the guest house is being tiled in Sateo to match the courtyard, and we are doing Talavera tile faces up across the front of each one of those. The upper terrace would be tiled at a point in the, excuse me, in the future, but it's not on the, was, that was never brought to surface at the previous meeting, so we didn't address it at this point. But it, the idea is that it would eventually be put in in Sateos up there across the top. And we have to keep the drainage correct because the water can't go behind the retaining wall. It is actually shuttled down the, the north side of the garage and goes through a wall drain and then exits out down the driveway because of concerns for, you know, too much water in a lower area.
Okay, thank you for addressing that. It was part of the conversation over the past two years, just so you know, because it is concrete, and it is part of the backyard. And as we talked about, the backyard in-hole and reducing the stark nature, reducing concrete more appropriate finishes and textures and more Spanish style, it was part of the backyard. So I appreciate you mentioning the future plans for that.
No, we, we, that had always been a part of our overall long-term. It's just, as in anything, when you address a, a project of this size and scale financially and everything else, it was just one more thing that said, well, we can get to this in a future point in time. We do have to more or less keep it up there, and it has to be a patio slash un, what's the correct word? Un-landscape space, only because if too much water goes down that hillside, we would be undermining the large retaining walls that are beneath it that go to the pool. We've already had a problem with that. The neighbor above them, somebody took the hose and threw it in the pool and put a cinder block brick on it and turned it on and walked away when the house was under construction. And we were doing a lot of work, and the contractor showed up, and the whole bottom of the pool had a foot of water in it. And the pool hadn't been, I mean, we hadn't, it was still rebar at that point in time, and we were like, WTF, where is this water coming from? You know? And then we found out that it was actually pouring down from the neighbor's yard. So it's a concern that we keep the drain and the hard surfaces up there so that it can be shuttled away, because even at that point, the water was so intense that it was actually coming over the wall and cascading down into the yard space.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for hearing us out.
You're welcome. We have another speaker card. Catherine Yurka.
Good evening, Chair Shire, and members of the Historic Preservation Commission. My name is Catherine Yurka. I'm here on behalf of the Glendale Historical Society. I just wanted to reiterate our support for the nomination to the Glendale Register and the Mills Act for this property. Francesca Smith, who, as I'm sure you know, is no softie, believes that even with the, even with the, the pool and the rear landscaping as it was configured before the changes, that there was no problem with its eligibility for the Glendale Register, as did Mr. Platt. I also want to remind you, just because it's been a while, but I believe that, that Jay Platt has said that had this property already been on the Glendale Register, the applicant at the time would have received over-the-counter permission for this project? That that's typically?
It was possible. I can't guarantee.
Oh, okay.
We wouldn't have done a few of the things we're talking about.
Right, okay.
But the presence of a pool in a backyard is very easy for us to approve in general.
Right. And that, and that also the applicant, this, this isn't a case where the applicant sort of did the work and then crossed her fingers, but had spoken with you about the plans for the pool in advance.
That's possible. I don't recall, but yeah.
I think we should be careful about hearsay and just what the Glendale Source Society knows to be.
No, she, this was brought up at the first commission meeting, and that was not contradicted. So, and was not, I mean, I've, I've heard that, that comment before, that you need to be careful, and I think that's right. But, I mean, I know it's been a few years at this point.
Yeah, the question for me, and I don't remember if we knew a Glendale Register nomination was going to come, or if we were just talking about a contributor in a district. Two very different things.
Oh, no, I think it was the Glendale Register. But anyway, this is, this was a while ago. Anyway, since this is probably not supposed to be a conversation, I just wanted, on behalf of the Glendale Historical Society, to reiterate the support, to hope that you're satisfied with the changes that have been made, and, and to not require too much of the hardscape to end up in landfill from this point forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing and move to discussion among commissioners.
Obviously, nobody wants to speak first. This is a difficult case, and we have been looking at it for a couple of years. So I will just start with some of my comments and thoughts. And do you want to reiterate, as was already said, that the house definitely, and I think the commission has said all along, that the house on its own is definitely eligible and worthy of listing on the register. Said that in October of 2017 and September of 2016. It is a contributor in a historic district. It does sit on a corner, as Jay mentioned, and so it is protected already. Most of the property is protected. The concerns that were outlined in the staff report are, you know, I think those are the concerns we talked about. But I think, again, overarching concerns were too much concrete, too much hardscape, too many sharp edges and corners, not enough variation in textures and finishes. And I think the commission was looking for a little more homage to the architecture of the house itself and the period in history when the house was built. So the design is, as the designer just said, it is a, it is a modern, contemporary, you know, crisp, clean-line design with some motifs that hearken back to Spanish revival styles, such as the tiles. So I think the goal that was set by the commission was to create a space which better reflects the Spanish colonial revival style of the house, and which was more historically linked to the existing spaces around the house. I do appreciate the edits to the landscaping, and I think somehow we ended up with a lot of focus on the landscaping, but I'm not sure if, you know, if the real focus or the, the 90% focus was on the landscaping. I thought it was more in the hardscaping. And so I do, again, I do appreciate the changes that have been suggested. I will also say, and, and I think the cutouts at the, at the deck look nice, at the patio area work, but we are looking at an 11% overall, actually 11% reduction of concrete at the deck area only, calculated, not 11% in the entire yard. So I think I just heard that the staircase leading up to the guest house is being modified shortly with tiles on the risers. Is that what I heard, or?
Yeah.
Okay. You can say yes or no. Sorry. Otherwise, we have to open the public hearing again.
Which I would like to suggest we need to review that.
Review.
Staff has not reviewed that proposal.
Okay. Right, so any?
And, and in general, I am not in favor of tchotchke-ing up things with tiles on risers unless we know there were tiles on risers. As we've said a million times, preservation isn't necessarily pretty. It's about what's historically appropriate. And it's not speculative in general. No, and I love places. No, and I love places that have tiled risers. And I'm obviously ready and happy to look at that. But it's disconcerting to not have had a chance to do that.
Okay. So coming back to historically appropriate, again, for me, I'm still a little bit, I'm still slightly on the fence. And I feel that even with some of the changes, we do still have a very contemporary iteration. So I think I'm going to stop my comments here and hear what my commissioners have to say.
Colleagues. Thank you. Anyone else? Nick or?
No comments?
I have to go last, so go ahead.
You have to go last?
You're welcome to speak if you may.
I would like to speak, but I'm kind of curious to hear what you have to say. I always value your opinion, so I'd like to hear what you have to say. Does the Commission always have to go last with comments?
It's generally how it works, but in a discussion, you're not voting right now. So in a discussion, I think it's fair. You don't even need to pass the gavel.
Okay, I would be happy to share my comments. Thank you for bringing this back to us today. I appreciate that you've spent some time in trying to address the comments from us in the past two years. What I thought might be helpful is, because it seemed like the last two years, there was some ambiguity about what we were looking at, why we didn't feel this backyard was an appropriate design and style for this beautiful Spanish home that it is. And so I think without us being prescriptive at the time, we said, you know, look, an architect should know what the style should be. Look around the front, look at the beautiful elements of the house and it should really reflect more of that imagery in the backyard and that whole essence. So if it's helpful, I have brought some images, but again, I would need your permission to share those on truly what I think a more appropriate exemplar example of Spanish backyard pool areas would look like. If you're open to seeing those, that might help us frame some of the discussion.
Yeah.
Okay, Jay, then if you want to show those?
Mm-hmm, thanks.
So again, the purpose would not be to really pick this apart, but just look at the feeling, the essence, the aura of the elements in the picture. So we can start here. Basically, this is the property. If you look even in the aerial view, the front has, again, beautiful tile walkway up to the front yard. The side courtyard, which is again, a little hard to see, but if you've gone on the tour, you know what that looks like. It's beautiful Spanish tile. It's a great little fireplace there. It is definitely in keeping with the Spanish style from 20s and 30s. And then you look at the backyard and from even the aerial view, it's in stark contrast to the rest of the house. So as we move to some of the other images, this is kind of the look and feel that could have been done in this backyard, that on a beautiful terrace property of so many opportunities for use of appropriate materials, textures, finishes, warm color. You can just kind of flip through these, Jay. Like I said, it's not meaning to be prescriptive, but just feeling whether it's flagstone, California native plants, terracotta, whether it's tile, whether the pool is more of a romantic application, which Spanish style wants to be more of a romantic, soft edges, rather than a stark, contemporary, crisp, tight, you know, clean line. So this is just kind of the feeling and the aura that I had been looking for because the house is phenomenal. It's, to me, it's a shame that there's such a missed opportunity in the backyard, that it's not really congruent with the rest of this gorgeous property. So I brought those just as ideas, again, not to be prescriptive. But I think that's where I'm having a challenge in approving this property. Not that the house isn't beautiful and gorgeous and the areas that are original, like that side courtyard. It's just when modifications were made, it wasn't done, in my opinion, as well as it could have been to be more appropriate to the style that might have originally been put in place or gardens even on those upper terrace decks. So those are kind of my comments in seeing, in seeing the proposed changes. I definitely appreciate their effort because they have taken it very seriously. They have come forward with cutting in some planters. Now, our nice, sharp saw cut edges for planters, appropriate for Spanish style. I wouldn't say they are, but again, right now, I think they're kind of grasping for, how can we soften this up and how can we make it more appropriate? When if the design was approached from the first time in maybe a better way, knowing that they're caring so much about this historic property and wanting to do in a preservation method and restoration method, more in keeping with what would have done at the, in the 20s and 30s, then we probably wouldn't be here today trying to kind of fix up or Band-Aid approach a backyard that, to me, is still quite a bit contrasting from this gorgeous house that it is. So those are my thoughts.
Okay.
Thank you for wanting to hear my thoughts.
I did, and I should say thank you very much. You did quite a bit of homework and these designs are very compelling, to say the least, and quite lovely, actually. Jay, I have just a question about the piece of paper that was put in our packet, the staff's memo. The four, on the first page, one through four, the conditions, are those specifically how they were written to, given to the applicant?
It's how our discussion ended at the last hearing.
Okay, because to, just to speak to the designer's point, number three, reduce the amount of concrete at the area between the house and the pool to increase the amount of landscaping. So I can see how it was missed to not address the upper area because it does say specifically between the house and the pool. So that said, you know, one of the challenges with this is that when we go by the Secretary of Interior Standards, one of the points they make is that when modifying historic properties, the goal is not to mimic or copy. Now, that can be interpreted many ways. This is obviously not a mimic or a copy. I guess one could argue that the photos you gave us are also not a mimic or copy. But the discussion here seems to be about trying to integrate and copy the style to, which just does not, that just seems to go against what the Secretary of the Interior Standards are. Yes, it would be obvious for somebody to walk into this backyard and see a pool and go, oh, yeah, that's clearly not part of the original house because there would be no pool in this, with this house. So that's obvious. The goal with differentiating modifications from the historic element, the historic piece is so that it's obvious where the history ends and the modern begins. And so the fact that we've had to go, unfortunately gone around so many times on this is frustrating for me because it seems to me there shouldn't be quite so much discussion on this because it shouldn't be required that they have to copy everything or try to blend in so seamlessly with what's there. I can understand Jay's point about the stairs and the risers. That is part of the historical element of the house. That is the house itself. That's part of what gets designated. So yes, my recommendation would be that, well, first of all, when your application, when the application was first introduced two years ago, it was based on a very specific house in a very specific condition. So if that's changed in the two years, then if other things have changed in the two years, then that's something that we need to know about if we're going to be making changes or making judgments on that. So if you haven't done that work yet, I would recommend that you don't do that work because it seems to me that's a change that would need to come before us as part of the application. So that would probably be best saved for later. And you can work with staff on that. But so long as everything is as it is, I'm, as I was before, in support of this pool design. I think they've done a beautiful job and a wonderful job of addressing the concerns that we've had. I like the three diamonds. I like that they mimic the tiles on the front, you know, the front stringer there around the spa and the front edge of the pool. There's diamond tiles in that, so it makes sense that the design on the back would be diamonds. I can understand the point about it not being perfectly symmetrical and adding more might make it look off, even, you know, make it look not quite right, unbalanced. So I just, I just continue to be in support of this and I would urge the Commission to consider that the Secretary of Interior Standards are quite specific about how things are supposed to be obviously different than the historic piece that's designated.
Thank you, and just to clarify, I'm not requesting that there be any copying or mimicking at all. It's more just having the design essence be more in keeping with the original architecture.
I understand, and my point is that it, the Secretary of Interior Standards don't state that that needs to happen. So I don't think that it's necessarily something, a point we really need to push.
Could you speak to the Secretary of Standards, Jay?
Yeah, Standard 9 talks about the idea that new work on historic properties should be differentiated while retaining compatibility with the historic structure. Within our field, there's a range of interpretive places we can go. And you can think of, you know, very modern additions to historic buildings that work and you can think of ones that don't work. And there are also subtle interventions that can be made that still meet the standards. And the Commission actually approved one at the House of Mayor and Architect, I'm losing his last name, on Royal Boulevard, just across the street and up the street a bit. The 1940s kind of modernish house. The Commission approved an addition, one story addition on the rear of that house. And the architect worked very carefully to kind of make some subtle differentiations to the point that a lot of people looking at it probably would think it was original. That's kind of a goal we have, that the eye should see that it's not part of the original. But the question is, how well trained does that eye need to be? So it's not as black and white as it has to be differentiated. And especially for smaller issues, I think things probably want to blend closer. A small addition on a historic house, like we considered in Rossmoyn for the bathroom addition, was in the vein of the house. The Commission voted to keep that little stepped wall that was there to kind of keep that layering of history alive. So you do have a range. I do think personally that this pool itself is clearly a modern pool. This isn't an old pool. So that will always stand out as more recent intervention in terms of having the concrete deck and seating area around it rather than a coping and then a different material surrounding that coping. So I think that already is differentiated. And whether or not you change the landscaping, I think that pool area is going to always read as kind of a newer, newer piece of the property. And because of that, I think you do have flexibility. I can see, you know, as I've said, I'm fine leaving it as is, but the work that they're doing, I don't think is in violation. The work that's proposed here isn't in violation of the standards, in my opinion.
Thank you.
There's the long answer.
The longer the better.
Any other, any other comments?
Well, and I'm just wondering at this point if it's even, again, I think we've stated this before. I think the owners have created the backyard they want to live in and it's beautiful. There's nothing saying that it's not. The house is worthy of being on the Register, but whether it's on the Register or not, it is protected. To Chair Shire's point, I think, I think some of us were looking for more of an essence of that period in history of the Spanish colonial revival style of maybe a more romantic hearkening. I mean, admittedly, you know, this is a contemporary, and not just the pool, the entire setting. So I don't know if we want to start, you know, at the last hearing, we said that we did not want to start designing the backyard because it's not really our role, right? We sent the owners back with their professional to try to create what we were articulating. Again, too much concrete, too much hardscape, too many sharp edges and corners, not enough variation in textures and finishes. So I don't even know if we want to start to make recommendations or if we just want to say, you know, it's a beautiful design. The owners have created what works for them and they should enjoy it and leave it at that.
I, I think we should use caution when we say things like, because the house is in a historic district, it's protected. I think that just, it's too easy a way out for properties to just be denied. Oh, well, it's already protected, so that doesn't matter. I think that that should not be something that's relevant.
Something to consider.
Yeah, I don't, I'm going to have to disagree with that.
You can't.
I think that that's probably not a fair thing to put on a house. A house shouldn't, certainly shouldn't be handicapped because it's in historic district, which is basically what that statement suggests. Jay, does this house have a name recommendation? That didn't make it into this memo.
It's in the original staff report, which is in, you receive that also.
Did we?
The Tupper House.
Tupper House?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move that the Historic Preservation Commission recommend to the City Council that the Tupper House be listed on the Glendale Register of Historic Resources and that the city enter into a Mills Act contract with the owner with the conditions mentioned previously that appear to have been addressed and that will be addressed with a one-year timeline to have those completed and that the rear tiles be left as three diamonds. That's all.
Is there a second?
Without a second, the motion dies.
Is there another motion?
If you want me to jump into this void?
You may.
Another motion could be made considering the level of work that they've proposed and finding if any of that looks like it's appropriate, but you believe it should be furthered in some specific way, that could certainly be a motion to give us a sense of Mills Act conditions that would be applied if you're inclined to go there.
Go ahead.
I'm hesitant to vote yes because of still a lot of proposals and what could look like in a few years. And while I like the recommendations, the hardscape at the bottom still troubles me. But I would recommend if it's this what it looks like in a couple of years and you're still planning on living there a couple of years, then bring it back in a couple of years without all the Photoshop images, see real images.
We oftentimes, just to remind you, that we do oftentimes put conditions on Mills Act contracts that we don't have any absolute certainty they're going to look exactly like what they are. So it's not uncommon, just so you know, that every now and then, we're going to have to put conditions on things and hope that they come out as well as we hope.
So we're struggling with this, so I'll just try a motion recommending that the property at 1450 Royal not be recommended for listing on the Register and not be recommended for a Mills Act contract.
Is there a second?
Make a recommendation? No? Don't vote down?
Well, you can.
That's one of your options, yeah.
Yeah, you can second this so that the motion at least goes to a vote and then you can vote either way you'd like to at the time of the.
The basis here, this is Glendale, this is still an act of Glendale Register and Mills Act nomination and application. And so the Commission, over the years, often can deny or recommend denial. This is always recommended to the City Council.
This is a vote to recommend denial.
So I will, I will second that motion if I'm so able.
Just a motion to recommend denial.
May we please have a vote?
Commissioner Craig Noddy?
No.
Commissioner Doom?
Yes.
Commissioner Vertanian?
Yes.
And Chair Shire?
Yes.
Motion passes three to one. Now, just so the applicant knows and everyone else knows the process, this does not necessarily doom this application because it could be brought to City Council with all of the information that has been considered so far by the Commission. And City Council could choose to designate and offer the Mills Act. And we usually leave that choice up to the applicant to decide if they want to pursue that. In fact, we always do.
Okay, with that, we'll move to item number seven, new business, 7A, 417 East Lorraine Street. This is in the proposed Casa Rodrigo. This is in the proposed Casa Verdugo Historic District. This is advisory review of a proposal to demolish the attached garage, construct an addition at the side and the rear, and construct detached garage. And this was continued from the meeting on May seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Madam Shire and members of the commission, I'm going to briefly approach the board and give you a, a brief presentation of this project.
Thank you.
And this is Dennis Jo.
I'm Dennis.
Please, Dennis, welcome back.
Thank you. Well, once again, the project is to demolish a one-car garage, which is approximately two hundred and eighty-eight square feet. So on this side here, the elevations of these drawings, you see it says existing, and on the left side of this one is proposed. What the applicant is proposing to do is to demolish the one-car garage, which is on the west-facing portion of the property, and demolish approximately eighty-five square feet, which is behind the garage, as you can see in the site plan, over here in this deletion here. So here's the one-car garage, and that deletion of eighty-five square feet is right over here. Just to go break into the property really quick, it is a relatively flat lot, approximately sixty-five hundred square feet. And once again, it is within the proposed Casa Verdugo Historic District. For the district application, the house was identified by the applicant as being a contributed structure to this potential historic district.
No. Sorry, Dennis, it wasn't identified in the application.
Oh, it was.
But staff believes it's a likely contributor, and I'm sure the applicant does also.
Thank you, staff would believe it is.
Could I, could I just jump in for once, I'd just give a little preface, because I should have done that, and I'm sorry, Dennis. You're reviewing this in your advisory review capacity because this is a pending historic district. And so any, any information we receive from you, any decisions, thoughts, or anything else, will be relayed to the next advisory review body, and depending on your decision at the end of this, we can talk about what the likely outcome would be. But just in terms of basic zoning, and Dennis can explain this better than I can, but I'll just throw it out there really briefly. This house has a non-conforming legal one-car garage. Houses in Glendale are required to have two-car garages by code. This was built before that was a code requirement, but the applicant is proposing to make a relatively modest addition of seven hundred and some square feet, I believe.
It's eight hundred and seven square feet.
Eight hundred and seven square feet at the rear of the house. Any addition over one hundred square feet requires that any non-conforming condition be brought up to code, meaning that they, to, to make this addition, which the applicant feels is necessary to, to use this house, they have to create a two-car garage. Because this is an attached garage at the front, and, I'm sorry, I didn't move ahead, here's a picture of the house, and maybe this picture is a better one. It's kind of an unusual condition in this neighborhood, but it is the original condition with this attached one-car garage. The only way to make this without asking for a variance is to demolish this garage, create a driveway to the back, and, and have a detached garage. Variances are a possibility in this case, but it's something that neither the commission nor the staff can rec, can require. So that's why we're here, going through the design review process. This is the applicant's wish to kind of make this move through, through the process.
As you can see from the proposed elevation here in, in comparison to the existing, with the proposed, it doesn't have the, the one-car garage over here. And for the most part, it retains most of the facade, retaining facade here, and may, which maintains the character of it. Removal of the garage and the new construction could, however, lead to a finding with the upcoming survey, with the pending process, application for the Casa Verdugo Historic District, for the house to have a finding of a non-contributing structure. Just to break into quickly into site planning and mass and scale and design in detail of the proposal, the additions will, once again, be primarily located at the rear and away from the street. It will maintain the street front setback, and it will maintain the configuration of a driveway leading to the rear, which is within the context of the neighborhood. Moving into the mass and scale of the property, it will maintain, the overall front, mass and scale or the elevation of it will relate well with the neighborhood context. The roof line of the addition will be slightly lower than the existing ridge line over here. And it will maintain the successive three gables, as you can see exhibited here on the west elevation. The materials and finishes support the building design, which include sand-finished plaster, horizontal sightings at the gables, in the west-facing gables, and asphalt roof shingles. Before I go into staff's recommendation and conditions, would you like me to go over the recommended conditions if you haven't already read so? Sure. Yeah. The first condition that staff's recommending is retain the profile of the existing garage at the southern portion, portion of the west elevation by stepping back the northern portion of the, by one foot in order to better recall the existing proportions and relationships between the facade's gable. And what we're saying here is, as you can see from the, the facade here, here's the addition, what we're saying is, has, we're saying that for this addition here to be recessed at least one foot so you can see what was, the garage was there before. So we're recommending this to be pushed back, and that volume to be pushed back.
Thank you for explaining.
Yeah, no problem, I know. It did sound like we're selling.
Adding a direction for the pushing back was going in would be helpful.
I'm sorry, say that one more time?
Adding a direction, like push back to the east, or push back.
Got it.
Would be helpful, because I weren't sure.
We thought it was going this way.
North, northeast, west, towards back.
Thank you for that. No, no, absolutely. Retain and possibly restore the wood windows at the south and east facade, so this would be the south, street front-facing, and the east, as it turns, it would be on this side here, in order to maintain as much historic fabric as possible. Number three is all new windows proposed at the west facade shall match the appearance of the existing windows, including being recessed within the wall, featuring wood sills, hung operation, and exterior mutton grid, appropriate to the size of the window. Proposed trim at the jams and the heads shall be deleted. So you can see here that has the depiction of the existing windows at the front, and as it turns to the addition and the west facades, we're recommending that these replicate what's being there and just deleting some of the, the trims that they're exhibiting here, just to match up from there. Number four is delete the proposed wood siding at the gable at the west elevation to better reflect the design of the west facade of the demolished garage. So on the west facade here, they're maintaining a three-gable configuration, which is exhibited with the garage. What we're saying here is on the last gable here, remove the, the wood siding here as is demonstrated, I know this probably doesn't show so well, but as you can see here on the existing conditions, the garage doesn't have the wood siding, so we're just saying. Number five, the ground cover at the front yard to be rela, re-landscape with a variety of low or very low wire use, California-friendly plants to enhance the appearance of the property. And number six, prior to building plan check, the applicant is to provide product detail for the metal section garage door demonstrating design consistency as depicted on the elevation. So we just want to review the quality and the material of the garage they're providing over here, garage door. Two comments have been provided and received by the public, which has provided to you as the dais. This overall, overall staff recommends approval with the stated recommended conditions. So if you have any questions for me, be more than happy to answer.
I do have a question.
Sure.
The new garage looks, is that, got the proper setbacks?
So.
From the property lines?
It has a setback of one feet from the west and a zero from the rear. The zoning code for the R1, we do allow, excuse me. Yeah. Yes. We do allow garages to encroach up to a zero setback. And probably what they're providing here is to allow a little bit of the eve to go into there. So, but, but by building code, we wouldn't allow the eaves to project or even to allow water to cascade off the, the roof eaves into the neighborhood yard. So if the eaves were to project or there is some findings that need to, building safety would require to be set back to appropriate, but the zoning code does allow garages that are detached to go with a zero setback.
And since, since it's a front-gabled structure on the left side.
Yeah.
It has to pull back a foot so you can deal with the roof drainage.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, for a flat roof structure, it could be right on the zero line.
But what is the, what did you say about building it safety, saying it has to have a difference in that?
No.
Well, if building safety requires a more restrictive for their purposes, for building for fire or drainage, or whatever it is, they could ask for a more restrictive. But by zoning code, garages are allowed to with a zero setback.
And they generally get built that way.
I thought they always had to have the similar four to five-foot setback garage.
No, not for detached.
Not for detached, wow, good to know. Learned something new every day.
That's why we're here.
That was my question. Oh, no, now I have another question, but not of you, sorry.
Okay.
Jay, can you? I'm sorry.
I have some question, or, I don't know, can we just stay with staff and Jeff?
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you have to stay up here?
Yeah, absolutely.
So go ahead.
Oh, mine was, can you explain what you meant about the variance? Thing you said about variances, that it's, there could be a variance granted for the one-car garage?
It, it's a possibility. We can never guarantee that a variance will be granted because it's heard by a planning hearing officer.
Okay.
And so, you know, if the applicant chooses to, depending on your decision tonight, the applicant will have that as an option to consider. They've always had it, but they've chosen to move through this process. But, and the architect can kind of explain some of the, the timing here.
Okay.
But, you know, staff thinks based on the historic issues here that we would probably be able to support it, but it does add, add some time and some cost depending on what your decision is. So it's, it's a little hard to say, but the, the main point is, the boards and commissions and staff, we can never require that someone go through the variance process because it's inherently uncertain what the outcome's going to be, but we have it available to them if they choose to go there.
Okay, thank you.
Can you talk a little bit about the driveway? Because it looks, in one, in the drawing, it says a concrete driveway to remain, but obviously, there's a new one after some point, and it looks like it's maybe starting its original condition and then veering off towards the left or towards the west at some point. And it's not clear how that's being handled, because in the photos and in real life, the driveway is in quite poor condition, it looks like it's been filled in.
Right, the new driveway that they're showing on here will take place of where the existing one-car garage is currently located. So as that gets placed, a new driveway has to be.
If you, if you look at this photo, the driveway apron is offset from the property line, so they're retaining the existing apron in the beginning of the driveway approach and maintaining the landscaping to the left side, which is something we encourage. But then the driveway is shifting over to, to maximize the area because there is going to be the small, I can't remember, four or five feet wide, the, the new addition coming out in the location of the garage.
Yeah.
So, so the driveway does jog a little bit.
Yeah, so it's just, there's, I don't see a line that indicates where the existing stops and the new starts, it would be helpful in the plans to note.
Well, this is all going to be rebuilt, and they're creating a Hollywood driveway with a landscape strip in the center.
Oh, then why does it say concrete driveway to remain? Existing.
Well, I don't know.
On A point, two point one.
It doesn't look like that concrete's great, you can ask the architect about that.
Okay. Oh, we have the architect here?
Yeah.
As well? Got it. I will save my questions for you then. Okay. Anyone else for staff then?
What is the square footage of the current garage? The, two hundred and eighty-eight square feet. Yes, two hundred and eighty-eight square feet.
Okay, any other questions for staff at this time? Okay. Thank you very much. With that, we'll open the public hearing, and we have a couple of speaker cards. First is Hamlet. Zorabian?
Zorabians.
Zorabian.
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, my name is Hamlet Zorabians, and I'm the project architect. And for the record, my address is thirty-four sixty-seven Ocean View Boulevard, Suite B in Montrose area, north, north Glendale. The, the house, existing house, it's thirteen hundred square feet only, and it's a very small house. And it's, the, the family who's moving in, I mean, they, obviously, they need an addition to it. So from the very beginning, we, I've actually discouraged them to add a second, second story to the house. So we started that way to have an addition on the first, first level only. And so most of the addition that you can see, it's going to be in the rear of the property, and there's no addition in the front. In this beginning stages of, of the, of the design, when we approached planning, this was a few years ago, actually, this project when we started. And at that time, they had some issues with, with property ownership back then, which was resolved later on. And so we are coming back with that, and now we find out that the, this neighborhood is potentially going to be, become a, you know, historically, historic district, as a matter of fact. So just for that, we have removed any kind of additions to the front of the project. We are keeping entire frontage of the project as is. There are no changes to the roof ridge, there's no changes to anything in, in the front, with the exception of the, some of the windows that we were proposing to replace alike with the same material. Some of the existing doors, patio doors and windows in the back, they already had replaced, had, had been replaced by lesser quality materials, which we're going to be obviously changing that. We're looking at matching everything together with a nice, nice wood windows. And so as far as the garage is concerned, yeah, the existing garage, which is only a very small garage portion in the front, and then there is a sort of a laundry in the back, so I don't know when that was added, at one point of time that that was added or taken from the garage itself, too. But that garage, obviously, it's, it's non-conforming, so as the planning staff explained, you know, in order for us to proceed with our additions, and obviously, the first, that small parking, being in that location, very close, we're not going to be able to use it that, that much. If, if the, if the family has a three-car or two-car, it's going to be very difficult for them to do that, and they, they have to leave their car on the driveway, obviously. So there's some technical issues there. So what it is, what we are doing, we are proposing to have that two-car garage, which is just minimum size, it's not an oversize, it's a minimum size required by zoning that we're putting there. Setback's already explained, and that's the exact reason that we have given twelve inches on the, on the west side because of the drainage issue. I recognize that, we don't want to, you know, take the gutter or whatever we have to the neighbor's side, so that's for, just for that. And it's a very modest house, it's a very modest addition, is actually, in this zone, you can add up to twenty-six hundred, you can have a, a, you know, twenty-six hundred square feet house, which you're allowed to do forty percent, but we are not even going to that threshold, we're trying to keep it down. And I think this is just minimum for this family to move in, and they've been waiting for a long time. They have actually acquired another house, tried to live there, and now they're renting, and they're, they're just, time is a very difficult issue for them. And we've been waiting to, 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 to bring the project to your attention so we can get your comments, so we can actually facilitate their, their permit. And so we, we are very much pressed hard on time. But I just want to say, overall, we're not going to be changing the facade of the building, it's going to be the same. Even the materials, colors, and everything that there is, we're going to be matching exactly to the existing, and all the conditions that the planning has set forward, we are, we're going to be abiding by it, we have no problem with it. I'll just make a one comment, which I've, I, we are, I'm restoring another historical building elsewhere. For that one is a different issue, but this particular one, some of the windows are not properly working, and I was thinking that to, just to try to fix it or rehab it, it might be kind of hardship on my, on the owner. If we were able to change those windows to a new window, but alike material, same color and everything, that would be better. But again, I, we have no problem adhering to what the recommendations that the planning department has made. Other than that, I'll be available for any comments. So I just want to mention to you, like, for instance, the, the roof cover itself right now, it's a, it's a pretty nice roof covering is there, but it's not an original one. There were certain portion of the building done in the backside, which was done very later on. I don't know what, in which date, but they had some, done some little minor, you know, additions and so on and so forth. All of that is going to be all cleaned up. So what we're going to be doing, the details that we're going to be putting forward, and we're going to be using here. So what we're going to be doing, the details that we're going to be putting forward and we're going to be using here the materials, it's just going to mimic whatever it was there. That's our intention, not to change it. And that one foot difference, and I completely agree with the staff, and I think that was mentioned to me in one of our, you know, meetings that we had, work sessions that we had. And I can see that, that is, it's going to be really helping the west side wall. And I think I completely agree with that. So what we will do, that, an added portion that we are adding in the, in the west side, we will push it in twelve inches so that we'll keep that profile of the first, first profile in such. As far as the wood siding on top, again, we have no problem not to put it there. I personally thought it can actually bring down the, the, the look of the height of the building. And because the other portions had it, I was just imagining maybe they had removed it at a later date and it would be nicer to have it there. So those are the two items that I had just comments on. Other than that, we were fine with as is, whatever the comments are, we would adhere to it. So I'll be available, available for any comments if you.
Yeah, do you mind addressing the driveway and the existing versus new?
Yes, that's, that's very, very good question. Well, we intend to keep whatever, as much as existing as possible. If the driveway has cracks and, and it's going to look really bad, then we're going to be removing them, but replacing them the way it is. The only thing is that we're going to be introducing a, a strip of landscaping in the center of it so to lessen the, you know, the effect of the hardscape there. And, and what's, what we are putting a note there that we're saying the new driveway, it refers to the portion of the driveway, existing driveway, portion of the driveway, I'm sorry, portion of the paving that there is right now, which is actually is part of the garage, that we'll be removing. We don't want to leave that there to, to, to see it really, that's going to be kind of ugly. So what we are saying, what we're going to end up having, a very smooth driveway, concrete driveway that is going to go up and we're going to match as much as possible. Obviously, we will have some, some crack lines and everything introduced there. I mean, and that's, that's, so the, the, just all the way, the driveway location and the width, all the way to the garage will stay the same, except that when it, when it comes to the new portion, it's just going to jog. And I think it, it's a nicer thing. I mean, it just creates a little bit nicer.
Well, the, the plans are currently showing it jogging much sooner than at the garage starting point.
That's true, because I had to make a trans, a smooth transition just to be much safer when the car is coming and turning. It's not that very far. I mean, we can adjust that if you, if you wish, but.
Yeah, it can't be too sharp. I see what you're saying.
Yeah, I don't want to have a very sharp.
It's got to be gradual.
Yeah, because if someone is backing off.
I thought I just heard you say that all the, all the concrete that I currently see in that photo up into the garage door is staying and it starts jogging after that point. But that can't be true. That's not what your drawings are showing.
No, I misspoke. I apologize.
Okay.
Our, our intention was to keep the location, the width of the driveway as is, as much as possible.
The width?
The width of it, yes. Now, you can see right in the middle of it, there's, you still have paving there, but that's going to be changed to a landscaping strip. So obviously we have to cut that out and perhaps we have to do the entire driveway new with a nice, but the same location, same width, and everything is going to just go up. But the landscaping, as you can see, landscaped to the left-hand side, that, that we're going to be keeping that. When it comes to the transitional point, we're, we want to be safe and clean. So if someone is driving, we don't want to have abrupt changes in that.
So in your plan, it's looking as if you are putting in landscaping down the center of the driveway as an old driveway might have been with.
Correct.
Two tri, is that true?
Yes.
So then the existing driveway, again, to remain, is not going to even remain because now you're cutting out the middle part of that driveway.
Correct. The driveway finish is not going to be remaining. We're going to be taking. But location-wise and the width-wise, it will be the same. Yes, to answer your question, yes, it won't be.
I don't think my question was a yes or no answer. I mean, I'm still confused. Jay, can you, or Dennis?
Goal was to try to retain portions of this driveway.
But for cost or for original or what's, for what purpose?
No, no, not for cost.
My, my best guess is that the decision will be made to replace the entire driveway because this doesn't really look like you're going to be able to match it in any.
Yes, I agree.
I, I mean, I don't know. I think I read that point as meaning it's not going to be removed and all replaced with grass. I, I read it as, there's going to be a driveway here, so this concrete driveway is going to remain and it's going to lead to the backyard versus all of this is going to come out and suddenly we're going to put grass there. That's kind of how I read it. I didn't mean it, I didn't read it as.
Not grass, it's clear.
No, I understand.
And, and plans, when it says E, existing, concrete driveway to remain, it literally means that. So I'm trying to understand.
Perhaps it was an over-exuberant.
Okay, okay.
Very much, yeah, that's, that is true. And you can see that there is a, there is a difference of shade in the driveway itself.
Yes.
So one of your, yeah, someone made a comment like that. I thought that it was supposed to be like that because this driveway is going there and that's existing. So we're going to be removing that portion in the center and we, and we're, we're going to be putting it landscape strip instead.
All the way down to the new driveway?
Yes.
But the architect did say that you are open to perhaps the entire driveway being replaced, which if the commission.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Yes, yes. We are, we are open to that, absolutely.
Okay, any other questions for the architect? I had a couple more if, if no one else does. Go ahead.
Just a quick question on, on the windows. You said that you, it probably would be easier for your client to replace them with light material being presumably wood.
Mm-hmm, yes. The original one is wood.
Okay, as opposed to. So recommendation.
Give me fiberglass that you.
Well, the, the staff recommended that they keep the original ones and refurbish them to keep the original fabric of the house. You're, you're trying to convince us that it's going to be better for your client and cheaper, I think I heard you say, to put in new.
It's not cheaper. It's, it's, in order for you to refurbish it, you have, you need specialists. You need to bring people.
Yeah, they do a very good job.
Yeah, okay. If that becomes a condition again, I said I have no problem.
Okay.
But new windows, this, this might be a very single glass window. The new windows will be much more energy efficient. You're talking about the south-facing wall, which is going to be really hot. So I'm, I'm thinking if, if I can keep the configuration the same, same material and the way it is, not changing anything. I mean, as far as that's concerned, that will become a custom window itself. We would rather do it that way if the option is given. If the window is in a good shape, we'll just keep it. Why, why we should change it? I just want to have that latitude there, so maybe able to kind of make a decision, informed decision.
Do you know at this point in time which windows would potentially, you consider not to be in good condition?
Uh, no, I don't know. I really don't know because they were all painted. Some of them, some of them I know that they're very hard to open. But I don't, I don't know. What I'm, what, what I know is that new, the newer portions are going to be receiving the same quality windows. And so if the ones that are broken, you know, if I have the option of refurbishing or providing a new one to match, I'd rather, I, I prefer to provide a new one with a double glazing.
So what, what are the materials of the new windows that you're proposing?
Well, if we are keeping the, in the windows wood, there's going to be just wood windows.
For the new?
Yes.
Because your plans indicate fiberglass on page A seven.
Yes, that's true. That's, that was.
So is it wood or is it fiberglass?
Well, the best scenario for us is that the wood, when it's painted wood, let me explain it this way. Even, when I say fiberglass, it's a fiberglass clad wood. So the look of it is the same, except that it doesn't chip after a couple of years because of, you know, sun, sunlight. So it's easier to maintain that. It's the same look. So that, I can present that sample to, to the planner, you know, the planning department so they can check it out. But we're not trying to change anything of the existing as far as configuration and the design of it.
So staff's recommendation was based on if the commission is, understands that maybe it's acceptable to remove the garage. We would like to keep the house.
You know, closest.
As close as possible to its original condition. That deviates from the historic district guidelines, which do allow for replacement windows to not necessarily match in kind the original material. We never allow vinyl on front facades in historic districts and most situations on side facades. Fiber glass clad wood windows, and this terminology gets very confusing because we, and we get a lot of, not, not from Mr. Zorabians, but from other applicants. We sometimes hear funny things and we have to be very careful about it. There are wood windows that have fiberglass cladding, just like there are those with aluminum cladding. Those actually do a very good job of maintaining the proportions and overall appearance of, of historic wood windows. If people do not want to just put in the wood window and we do approve those regularly, we also approve regular fiberglass windows for the entire frame. It's made out of fiberglass. That is appro, that's acceptable under the historic district guidelines. Restoration is almost always cheaper than replacement. We would love to see that here if, if, and Mr. Zorabian said that is one of the options they would consider. That's why we put the commission in. And that's only if the commission is open to this project in general. So, but you, you should keep in mind that the historic district guidelines, if this project were approved and we had them restore the windows in five years, they could come back and put in new windows under the district guidelines. It would be different.
Jay, with staff? Be part of the decision-making on whether or not the windows would be viable for restoration? Or do we just leave that to?
We, we don't have the ability to check on every window and there's, there's also, it's very difficult for the city to say no to someone who wants to make their windows more energy efficient. I know there's all kinds of issues and differences of opinion on that. But just as a political, just purely political level, it will be hard to justify that we're forcing people in all situations to keep their single-pane windows. So our goal in a historic district is to get the new windows looking as close as possible to the old windows. In the Glendale Register property, even non-Milzack properties, we're going to be much more strict about windows and retain wood windows and replace, if they need to be replaced, we're going to look at those more carefully. But as, as our districts increase and window replacement is probably the number one thing that comes through our office on a daily basis, we try really hard in the districts to get them to look very close to what was there. But still, but still give the energy upgrade and the fact that people want new windows in many situations.
And I think you said fiberglass clad wood gets us to the closest proportions.
Or aluminum clad wood.
Or aluminum.
Because it's a very thin layer applied to an actual wood frame. In some ways, it's better. The wood today is so lousy compared to the old wood that you probably do want to have a little extra protection on it. But there are plenty of people who make wood windows, brand-new wood windows, and we can certainly recommend that also.
And so with the.
I shouldn't say plenty of people. It's relatively rare. But we have a very small group of people who do that, so.
And so are the standards apply also for the new doors at the back? So, because those also say fiberglass.
Um, in a historic district, they can do whatever they want.
Okay.
We intend to match all the windows and doors together.
I think the front door is proposed to replace them.
Yes, that's a, that's not, that's not an original door, by the way.
Yeah, no.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the design, the addition. Can that addition be made? It doesn't look like the garage, the only, it doesn't look like the garage is affected by the design, that the garage is, obviously the garage is being told to be removed because it's non-conforming and all of that. But looking at the design, the garage could still stay in place and this design could still be done, right? It doesn't.
No, because, no, because the garage commands twenty-feet-wide inside dimension.
Okay.
Which we never have. If I have to.
Oh, I see the powder room and everything. The powder room bleeds over to where the garage is now, is that right?
Yeah, but we just don't have enough. We have ten and about, we have about thirteen, thirteen-six, fourteen feet. And the thing is that if we had to keep, and then let's say modify that into a two-car garage, the entire, the entire entry of this house is just going to be gone. We just, it's a very narrow lot.
No, I wouldn't say modify it. I would.
Yes.
Say just try to get.
That was, that's a, that's a difficulty. And also besides that, the new garage, when you're attaching, you have to have five-foot setback that you were saying. So that five-foot setback is already gone.
Well, it would remain. The goal, my thoughts were about a variance, trying to keep historic character from the front. Because your, your comment about you're not changing the facade, you're not adding on to the facade. The removal of the garage in a way is adding to the facade by adding open airspace. So the facade is changing. It's changing dramatically, but the removal of the garage, it may not be of the house, but it's of the entire full structure. So I don't think it's, to say it's not changing is not really correct. And that's, and that's what we're here about.
Okay.
The main thing we're discussing is the, among the other things, the finishing materials for the windows and whatnot, is the garage. Because it's.
The, the entire neighborhood also, in the entire neighborhood, most of the houses, I would say ninety-nine percent of the houses, they have detached garages in the back.
Yeah.
And so it's more consistent to have actually, because someone figured out in nineteen thirty-nine that that's better to do. You, what I'm trying to say, they all have driveway because it's a narrow lot. You can't get so much of frontage for the house of itself.
I live three blocks from this house. Mine's in the back.
Yeah, yeah.
I can't drive to it because the driveway is so narrow, but I have one separate from the house. I get that. And that's, that's what, and that's what, but see, that's what, that's kind of what makes this such a unique, cool house from a historic standpoint, is that it actually still has this crazy, wonky decision of having a little garage attached to the side of it, and that's kind of what the charm is of it and why it's got some historic significance. That's, and that's what we're here to discuss unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on where you're standing or sitting.
Just a couple last questions for me. Are the awnings being taken off the house?
Yes. Yeah, because I don't think that was an original awning. That was.
And what about, I know there was a condition put on the front yard landscaping. With that, are you planning to keep the brick planter beds that are there?
We will keep everything exist, existing and we will, we will refurbish it in a sense. But the landscaping will be very low. I don't think we're going to go with a very lush landscaping that is going to change the character of this. That lawn area should stay there, but we, we choose some sort of a lawn that is more, you know, water consumption friendly. And then I think that in the edges, we'll have some flowering shrubs, nice colorful flowering shrubs at the edges.
Okay, then I just want to check. I could be completely wrong, but bedroom number three, which is the window to the right of the living room from the front facade.
Yes.
Looks to be drawn in the plans further to the right of the house or further to the east than it is in reality. And I just want to make sure you're not moving it.
I'm not moving. It's going to be existing.
Okay.
We, we, we try in doing everything so accurately. Sometimes even we, you know, we are humans.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Sure, absolutely. That's a good question.
And then I also noticed in the back, there's a loggia and there's also a note that says that the, let me see. Oh, boundary walls, patio covers and trellises require separate permits. Does.
If it's a separate.
Design or stuff, do you require separate for a loggia or is this included in this plan?
It's attached to the addition. We would review it as part of the addition.
Okay, so it's, it's included here. Okay, I just want to check. Okay, that's all the questions I had for you. Separate, got it.
If it's detached, then it would be separate permit. Building department would.
Okay, that clarifies it, thank you. Are there any other questions for the architect? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, with that, we have two other speaker cards. Sean Brussel.
Thank you, Chairwoman Shire and members of the commission. I want to thank Commissioner Cragnati for putting his finger exactly on it. We heard many times, we're not changing the facade. This, this is exactly why you are here tonight, because the facade is being changed. And that really is the, the issue here. Now, you may look at this house, and I'm sure some people on television are, are watching television, looking at this house and going, oh, I'm not really thrilled with, with this house. But as Mr. Platt told us a few minutes ago, preservation is not what is pretty, it's what's historically appropriate. So that's really what we've, what we've got to focus on here. So I'm here on behalf of the Casa Verdugo Historic District Committee. We are the applicants for the historic district as well as other people in the neighborhood who are concerned and supportive of, of creating a historic district. The, this house is, was pointed out, it, it is unusual. It's a nineteen thirty-nine minimal traditional with an attached garage on the front facade. And you may say, well, that's not the, the, the common theme in the neighborhood, but that's what makes it very, no, in one way it makes it noteworthy. And so just for that fact, we think it should be preserved because it is. And so just for that fact, we think it should be preserved because it is, it is a rather unusual articulation of that. Now, now the staff's recommendation here to demolish the garage is based on really two, two arguments. First, they say that the, that it's okay to demolish the garage and, and convert this likely contributor to a historic district into what we all agree will be a non-contributor to a historic district. Because they say, "Well, there's plenty of potential contributors in the historic district that's well over the minimum eligibility threshold." I, I'm here to tell you that we believe that to be unfounded now. Of course, as you, as we are all aware, there's no survey, but with all due respect, we have, in the Casa Verdugo Historic District Committee, have a lot of, we have intimate knowledge of all the houses in the neighborhood. And we can tell you that of the 112 houses in the proposed historic district, no fewer than 31 will likely be determined to be non-contributors. So at least 31 by our calculation. That means at a maximum, you have 72% of the houses that would be contributors. Now, you need 60% for a historic district, as you know. Now, that, that 72% includes every other potential one that we think, yes, it's definitely, or it's possibly, or mm, it's on, it's on, it's on the, it's on the margin there. So by that, what that means is the difference between eligibility for a historic district and non-eligibility for a historic district is 13 houses. And that's at the maximum, 13 houses. And we don't think, we think that number is actually going to be, we're going to be lower. It's going to be fewer. So we can't afford to lose even a single likely contributor. And this, the second argument that the, and is, is, as Mr. Joe mentioned, there's this provision in the zoning code that says if you add more than 100 square feet to a residence, a two-car garage is required by the zoning code. However, there is an exception for Glendale Register properties, right? But there's no, no similar exception--
Glendale Register properties?
If, where the square footage of the addition is no more than 24% of the existing floor area. Glendale Municipal Code 3032030B4.
Yeah, it requires that you not have to upgrade your parking.
Right. That's what I--
Well, it doesn't apply here.
That's right. I'm saying, and that's, that's what I'm pointing out, that for Glendale Register properties, we realize that to destroy the property in order to add the two parking spaces doesn't make--
It's also for a change of use.
Right. So--
In the, of a Glendale Register property, you don't have to add parking for a change of use. This is not a change of use.
But if you, if you, where you have a, an addition of less than 25% of the existing floor area of a Glendale Register property might-- Staff is consulting.
Well, I guess, we're not talking about a register property. Maybe just continue with what you've left.
The point I'm making is--
I, I mistaken, change of use is one of a list of things, including the addition. You're, you're correct, but it still doesn't apply.
And that, that's my point. And, and that is, we recognize with Glendale Register properties that we, if, if it would, if it would change the character of that Glendale Register property, we're not going to require that parking to be, to, requirement to go in. But there's no similar requirement with contributors to a historic district or potential contributors. So you're faced with two, a conflict here. You have the parking requirement that's telling you, "You need to add the two spaces." And then you have your historic district guidelines, which are saying, "Well, we really shouldn't, you know, we should try to maintain a contributor's intact character." We think you can finesse that. There's been talk about a, a variance. Perhaps you could, you could require that, that existing garage be extended to the back to make it a tandem parking. That might be a way to do it. I think what we're suggesting is that the facade should be maintained and you should look at creative ways of accomplishing that and not destroy the, the existing street-facing facade, which is really integral to its character and would convert this to, from a contributor to a non-contributor. Let me just say about the, the wood windows. I agree with staff recommendation. We agree with the staff recommendation. The existing windows should be kept as is. It is much cheaper, as been pointed out, to restore windows. I've had it done in my house. I've also had vinyl windows replaced with wood windows with a permit. And, and I've done, I've done it both ways and, and it can be done. But I will tell you, from a cost perspective, fix the existing, it's, it's much cheaper. The final thing I want to say about this property is it's very disturbing to us in the Historic District Committee. They, this property has been allowed to, I hope you drove by it. It's, it's all weeds and overgrown, and it is an eyesore for the neighborhood. And I wish this commission would direct the applicant to clean up the property forthwith. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next speaker card, Catherine Yurka.
Good evening again. My name is Catherine Yurka. I'm here on behalf of the Glendale Historical Society. We agree with staff's recommendation about restoring the original windows. In fact, it was very heartening to hear this conversation about where an applicant has, is trying to make a case for why you might want to allow him to replace original windows with a different material. We believe that a correct interpretation of the Historic District Guidelines would suggest that unless the windows are, cannot be repaired, and that has been established, that an applicant must always seek permission from the Historic Preservation Commission, not from staff, to make such a replacement. So this is actually kind of exciting to, to get that, that feeling of a back and forth over a project. I actually think this is a pretty house. I love this house. I think it's absolutely remarkable looking. And I think we can all agree that the garage is almost uniquely integrated into the design of the house. And I should say, that's not just my opinion, but the Preservation Advocacy Committee's opinion as well. We were all just kind of gaga about it. And, and you've heard from staff, you've heard from Sean Bressel, who knows Casa Verdugo better than anyone, that this would not be a contributor if the garage is removed. And we think that removing the garage should not be approved because there's substantial evidence that Casa Verdugo is an eligible historic district. You saw the incredible application that Sean Bressel submitted. You agree that it is likely eligible, and staff agree that it's likely eligible. And as with Glendale Register properties, it's not being, I'm sorry, with, as with, yeah, with the Glendale Register, it's not properties that are on the register that matter so much as properties that are eligible. It's the same thing with eligible historic districts. Casa Verdugo has had substantial alterations. In fact, for many of us, it seems like this historic district application came in kind of in the nick of time. And because there has been no survey completed, we have no idea how many properties will qualify as contributors and how many will, will not. It could be right around 60% that are contributors. In the past, when alterations to historic district contributors have come up, staff has said that it's the historic district that is the historic resource, not individual contributors. This is an interpretation that we disagree with. But if you grant that, that understanding of the law, that it's the historic district that is the, the historic resource, if by removing this contributor, it were to dip below the 60% threshold, thereby rendering it no longer a historic district, that would be a substantial adverse impact on a historic resource that requires environmental review. You have ample evidence that this is a historic district. You have no evidence as to the number of contributors. So I think on those grounds alone, that you cannot approve such a substantial alteration to the facade that it would render it a non-contributor. And so I very much support the idea of a tandem garage. That seems like a superb solution to the problem that the applicant faces. I will leave it there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll close the public hearing and discussion. No. Oh, he does? Oh, excuse me. Okay, you may come up.
Hi, my name is Hamlet Zorabian. I'm the project architect, for the record. There are a few things mentioned here. I guess we are moving away from our objectives here. This district is not a historic district yet. There are legal implications here. I mean, I'm, I'm speaking for my, on behalf of my client as well. My understanding was that we're coming to this hearing to get your comments and valuable comments that there is, and then for, for the planning department to be able to make a decision. Because this is not a approval process here. Am I wrong?
No, that is correct.
Yes, okay. I just want, because I, I'm hearing--
No, you heard some words, "approve." You're right. We are not approving. We are just advising.
I'm an architect. I understand when I'm approaching a project. If it's registered, if it's in a historic district, I completely treat it differently. This project is not in a historic district. I understand the argument, and I don't have any issue with that. But we've been very sensitive to this issue, extremely sensitive, I would say. That I, there are other buildings in the same block, same street, that all the windows have been changed to vinyl. I don't understand if they, you know, I mean, when, when the survey comes out, we will, we will be able to see. But I cannot hold my family, that family that is my client's family, to move in for any longer. It's three years. I cannot just, just stay here and then do nothing and then go forward. As far as the, the tandem parking is concerned, that's going to need a zoning variance also. Because you're not allowed to tandem park unless it's the excess parking spaces that you have. More than two, then you'll be able to park. So that's out of the picture. So, and, and the, and the, and the variance process could take minimum six months. It's about $15,000 overall cost to, to my client, and it's not fair to a small family that wants to move in. I, I see it extremely, extremely harsh treatment of the family and the situation. So I just wanted to bring this up to you because I'm not only concerned about only design, which is the great part of my work, but I also know the, you know, the, the dynamics of how this thing works. So I would just appreciate it. Please, whatever you decide here, for me, it's very valuable, and I'm going to take it into consideration. And I appreciate it this time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll close the public hearing. Sorry about that. Okay, comments and discussion among commissioners?
I have a quick question for staff. Jay, if the survey had been completed and this were defined a contributor or found to be a contributor, at this point in time, it would be flagged in the system as a contributor to a potential historic district? And there would be restrictions on it?
No more, well, it doesn't matter if it's flagged or not. We would, we would still be going through this process because it wouldn't be designated and you would still have an advisory review. From, from the day that you took this district under consideration until the day the council votes for it, the commission has advisory review, so.
Right.
I guess that's your question if it, if it were, if this were in a district, already a district, approved district, and this house were a contributor--
Well, then it comes before us rather than--
We would be the final--
Right, right. Then it comes to be for us, but we're in that gray zone.
Yeah.
And I think if the survey were completed, and again, I'm just, just a question, because I think there are homes that have been flagged in districts that are not actually districts yet that have found that they have restrictions on them? Do we have a situation like that in South Cumberland?
Yeah, through other surveys, yeah. The South Glendale Survey, we have lots of properties that will be flagged.
Okay.
Is your question, if we knew it to be a contributor, would it change anything here that we're reviewing?
I, I think you can presume this house as a contributor. I, I believe it is.
Yeah.
The community believes it is. I'm sure most of you, if not all of you, think it would be, so. So you can treat it as though, you know, and, you know, staff does not take pleasure in demolishing parts of potential contributors, but we also have a responsibility to guide applicants through this process. And it's my belief that if Mr. Bressel is correct, that 13 or so properties will be non-contributors, that this district will still be completely eligible as a district with over 60% contributors. I understand the community concern. I think it's a little bit alarmist because the percent this will, losing this house drops the percentage of contributors by 0.8%, which I don't want to diminish that, that is something, but I don't think it's going to be the tipping point. And I wanted to present that to you because I want the commission to know that you have a wide range of potential decision, you know, your, your decision can go from approving this to saying you don't think it's appropriate. And then we forward that to the next review, which would be, if you, if you did say you don't think this is appropriate, then this will go to the DRB.
Doesn't it go to DRB anyway? Or is--
Not necessarily.
Oh, inter, internal staff only, potentially.
This could be, this couldn't be an exemption. The square footage is too large at the rear for this to be an exemption. The applicant could choose to modify it to bring the square footage down. So it could be an exemption. It could be an administrative design review. But we're not going to do an administrative review if we already know that the community is likely to challenge that and then send it to DRB anyway. So we, we want to save everyone the time and the effort in that, in that process.
Actually, I have a question that I, I don't know, similar to Lorna's. So if it were already flagged a contributor, let's say the survey had been done and it was a contributor, would staff still be making this recommendation?
We still would be bringing it to.
But would this, but would staff's recommendation be what it is?
I, I don't, we tell people in our historic districts, when we sit with them in their living rooms and have community meetings, and we say, "We are not freezing your properties in time." If we're holding someone to the potential of only having a 99-square-foot addition, and I misspoke before, any, even a one-square-foot addition requires a two-car garage, but there's an administrative exception process that would allow a 100-square-foot addition to, to not have that garage. But realistically, we're always looking at bigger additions than that. So, so yes, we very well could be recommending that. I do think that Mr. Zorabian has done a very good job maintaining the character of the house through his proposal. A few of the tweaks we've recommended will enhance that. And it's a rough decision because we, we do tell people that we're not telling you, "You can't build." And this is a strange house with a strange condition. And I agree, it is a cute garage. That garage door is pretty cool. And I also think, like, if this work were done and we had our survey team coming down the street and they're supposed to do permit research when they think there may have been a change, but if this looks the way it was proposed, and I'm in a neighborhood that's all detached garages, it's possible someone wouldn't even recognize the alteration. That doesn't really mean anything in terms of your determination, but I just--
That's a good point.
It's, it's out there, so.
Dennis, do you want to share anything else with us?
No, I had no further. Jay was going to, he already clarified about the, when the additional parking kicks in. But, but thank you for asking. Yeah, he clarified right.
Yes.
One innocent question. Could they do the, I think you answered it, but I wasn't clear enough on the variance. Could they do all their additions and keep the garage?
Only, only through a variance process?
And that would cost six months more and 15--
It wouldn't necessarily be six months, and it's not $15,000. It's half of that, or approximately half.
It's approximately-- It looks like they would lose the powder room.
Right.
So they wouldn't be able to do the entire work?
You mean your fees.
And part of the kitchen, and part of the kitchen.
But you can move it back.
There, there are two options through the variance. The variance could be granted to allow the one-car parking to remain. If the applicant wanted to have two-car parking, they could propose a tandem garage. Tandem garages are not allowed by code in residential neighborhoods unless you've already met the minimum parking requirement.
I mean--
So it'd be easier to get a variance for just keeping the one-car parking rather than--
Trying to get tandem, yeah.
Do more design review for the garage.
Fighting for a variance to not have to put a huge two-car garage in that already small backyard seems like a great idea to me. It's, just eats up the whole yard, that garage. And you could have so much yard space back there. And if there's a case to be made for a variance, not have to then spend $50,000 or $60,000 or $100,000 building a garage, it seems to me that would certainly be made up for in the zoning, in the variance application process. Save the money on having to build a garage. I don't know.
And as I see, the commission just needs to be careful. You can't be in a position of advising the applicant to get, go for a variance.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that.
You know, and we can say it out loud because it is definitely an option.
We can't make a motion about that.
At the end of the day, if this has to go to DRB and then potentially could be appealed to city council, the applicant may look at that timeline and those costs and say, "Maybe we will look into this." But as of now, they haven't been interested in that. But after this meeting, depending on your decision, we, we can talk-- But after this meeting, depending on your decision, we can talk to them about that.
So I forget what we do here. Do we make a motion? Do we just, or do we just express ourselves?
It's expression. Clear expression, so I can take notes, and that will be really all we need.
Yeah, why don't we start with the.
But you can use words like recommend to deny, or recommend to approve, or modify with conditions.
Maybe we can start a discussion with the recommendations and conditions that the design staff have already proposed, and whether we agree with those or not. And then if we have additional considerations for design, we can kind of add those on there. Does that work for?
So some of them assume, right, deletion of the garage.
So should we go down that list? It's under the recommendation section, page six.
Yeah.
You want me to do it?
Go ahead.
Absolutely, I can do it. Recommendation number one is retain the profile of the existing garage at the south portion of the west addition by stepping back the northern portion by one foot in order to better recall the existing portions and relationship between the facades gable. And that was the one I further clarified about recessing the addition. So it kind of echoes what the previous profile of the garage was from the west elevation.
And I'd like to just show the commission sort of what that's based on. It's a little hard from the street, I think. We often look to preserve forms of buildings. If you picture this garage, and you can sort of see it here, this, the back roof of this actually has two pitches. It's a steeper pitch at the top, and then it shallows out toward the back. The idea would be, we're basically looking at this as if it's a loaf of bread, and there would be a slice of the garage left in this new addition. And the idea would be that that would echo the previous form of the garage by dropping the rest of the addition back a foot.
So let's just say, if we agree, we can talk about this later, that the garage could be relocated, do we agree with condition one?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yes.
Okay. Yes, okay. I think generally we would agree with that.
Can I read condition number two?
Yes, please.
Yep, okay. Retain and possibly restore the wood windows at the front, which is the south elevation, and the east facades in order to retain, to maintain as much historic fabric as possible.
Yes.
Yeah.
Generally agree?
Okay.
Is there agreement from you, Lorna?
Yeah, it says possibly restore, so.
What do you mean, they could leave them as is if they didn't need restoration?
Or if they're beyond restoration, they have to be able to replace them.
Well, I left that as the goal would be, to either keep them as is or obviously restore them.
Stuck and not working, or restore them?
I'm sorry. So if they're not viable to be restored?
No, they are.
Most windows are, and if they weren't, then we would.
This is not giving allowance to replace. This is saying you will keep them, whether they work or not? Or you will fix them and restore them and get them functioning and keeping the old wood windows? I agree to that. Does anyone else?
Sure.
Three?
Okay. All new windows proposed at the west facade shall match the appearance of the existing windows, including being recessed within the wall featuring wood sills, hung operation, and an exterior mutton grid appropriate to the size of the window. The proposed trim at the jams and the heads shall be deleted. Yeah.
Yes, I agree with that.
Moving on to number four. Delete the proposed wood siding at the gable end of the west addition to better reflect the design of the west facade of the demolished garage.
To be specific here, the original design featured horizontal siding, which is very typical for minimal traditionals at the gable ends. It didn't include it on the garage end, and if you look at the elevation in the drawings, you can see why. When you have a dual-pitched roof, as it is at the back, it just starts looking funny. So I'm going to go out on a limb and say the original designer felt it wasn't the right thing to do there. So we thought if we're maintaining that form, we should maintain that stucco condition.
Okay, moving to the recommended condition number five. The ground cover at the front yard to be re-landscaped with a variety of low or very low water use California-friendly plans to enhance the appearance of the property.
Yes.
Yep. Okay, moving to the last condition, number six. Prior to building plan check, the applicant is to provide product detail for the metal sectional garage door demonstrating design consistency as depicted on elevations.
Yes.
Yes.
And so, oh, go ahead.
So I'm sorry, can we add a condition?
Yes, now we can talk about things that we'd like to encourage the design staff to consider. So I listed a couple. We can talk on the driveway. We might want to talk about that. The windows, I think we clarified for sure, but also the garage.
What specifically about the driveway?
Oh, is it, is it new? Do we want to say it should be revised, you know, put in all-new?
I think the entire driveway should be.
Replaced?
If the garage goes away, then the driveway should be replaced. It's in pretty bad shape.
It doesn't look like it's in very good condition. But still the Hollywood style, right?
Oh, the garage, existing garage.
Did you have some other conditions?
No, no.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
And then I guess we can just mention, if there's a way to keep the original garage and meet the client applications' desires, requirements, since we can't encourage variance or anything else, then we can just offer that for you to consider.
You think it's a great idea?
Yeah.
It doesn't say anything in here about changing the front, or does it say somewhere, changing the front door? I just missed it.
The applicant said the plan was to change the front door and showing a, kind of a paneled door that looks appropriate on the elevation.
We don't need to put in something like that. It's already on there.
Wait, I'm sorry. If we, if we retain the garage, then none of the additions can be made. Is that correct?
Under, unless they get a variance.
Right.
They would require approval of a variance by a hearing officer, so.
Right.
And there would be some modification to their plan. They would have to modify. Correct. The kitchen, the kitchen and the powder room would have to be modified. Well, depending on what they decide, they have two options. If they were to move forward with a variance, they can request to not provide the second parking space, or they could, even though it wouldn't be considered a parking space, a tandem space in the back, however they want to address it themselves, however they want to frame the variance. But either way, in the end, it would be, I'm not going to, I mean, the project is to propose a second directly accessible parking space as required by the zoning code for an addition.
Do you have everything you need from us? Any other comments? Anybody?
Well, this was, your conditions were presuming that the garage could be relocated. So I'm hearing that the commission is okay with that, and that will impose these conditions.
Well, I think the, I think the way we were framing it, again, just being very sensitive to what our allowances are with not talking about the word variance. We would obviously prefer to find a way to keep the original garage. And if we can't, and if the applicant doesn't want to go variance route, whatever, chooses not to, then we would agree with staff's conditions that have been placed on it with the addition of our new driveway condition.
Okay, so the applicant is hearing that you encourage, whatever they heard. You are in a position to say that, because your recommendation will be going to the design review board, and, you know, HPC's recommendation can be to not approve this project. It's a hard recommendation to make when we're basically limiting the potential to change this house, which flies in the face of what we tell people in historic districts is the goal of districts. And that's why, you know, we hold Glendale Registered Properties a much higher standard than district properties, obviously. So I just want to make sure I'm hearing correctly that that's, because basically you're approving the project, you're recommending approval of the project, unless in the interim, the applicant decides to pursue a different course.
Unlikely, but I think that's what we're saying, right?
Okay.
I can't deny the project.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Good with that. Thank you.
All right, so it's all very clear. We will add conditions for the driveway to indicate that the concrete, the whole driveway will be newly poured, but we'll add something about following the scoring pattern of the historic driveway, so it maintains what we know that that looked like. And was that the only additional condition?
Yeah, and just making sure the windows are kept, which was, again, design recommendation anyway.
Right. Okay, and so you would, yeah, the way that's written is not allowing the possibility of replacement, so.
Correct.
And if it came down to it and they were able to prove to us that these were deteriorated beyond repair, I assume that the commission would want new wood windows rather than clad windows? Or would you be okay with the clad windows they're proposing for the rest of the house?
New wood windows.
New wood windows, okay.
I would just ask that it be whatever is normally consistent with a house in the historic district. I would like it to be, my recommendation is that it's in line with whatever the rules are for historic districts.
Okay, let's see how the.
Well, what is the rule right now, if someone in a historic district?
We would allow a fiberglass clad wood window, if that's what they're proposing for the rest of the house.
Yeah, so I guess there's no, I don't think that we should be imposing anything more strict than what is the guideline.
We have two votes for all wood. We have one vote for fiberglass clad wood, and we need.
Just to clarify, you have one vote for whatever the district guidelines are?
I understand.
Okay.
Hypothetically, prefer wood. If you're pretty hypothetical.
All right, then we will go with wood windows for the, and it's basically just these three front windows. The bay here with the three windows in it, and then this window on the side. The side of the house isn't extremely visible, and then if this went through, all these windows would be new anyway, so.
On the north, or on the east, yes, west side, yeah. Okay.
All right.
I speak to speak hypothetically to one thing to the client. Speaking hypothetically, I understand they love the house they're going to buy. And if you love the house you're going to buy, I wouldn't recommend all these drastic changes. To a funky house, if you like it, keep the funky house. And I agree with Christian of Cragnati, it's a lot of space you're losing in the backyard of putting this giant garage in there with a young family in the pool, and you have no other room. If you are able to hypothetically keep the garage at the expense of just losing a powder room and push everything back a couple of feet in your yard, because there won't be that second garage, then you can keep the kitchen and laundry room and everything else back a few more feet and still have a giant yard and keep the funky condition of the house that we like.
But he can't? Yeah, it's okay.
Sorry, Hamlet.
I know, it's just hypothetical.
The public hearing has been closed, we can't really have discussions with people in the audience. Okay, so with that, are we ready to move to 7B? Okay, yes?
Sure.
Yes.
7B, 2301 East Chevy Chase Drive. This is Glendale Registered Nomination and a Mills Act application, and thank you for your patience.
Okay, so finally, we have a Glendale Registered Nomination and Mills Act application for 2301 East Chevy Chase Drive. So this property is located in the Chevy Chase Canyon neighborhood, as seen on this map. This single-family house was built in 1938, so a little bit later than we usually see for Tudor Revival homes. The original building permit was Howard C. Mertens as the contractor, and he was a local builder that worked in Glendale. Kenneth and Myrtle McKeig were the first residents of the house. They lived there until 1974, when Armand Monaco and his wife Carlotta, along with their two children, moved in. Monaco was an architect who worked in the LA area, and he designed several interesting properties, such as the St. Peter's Italian Church in downtown LA and the French Hospital in Chinatown. But there does not appear to be any evidence suggesting that Monaco was the original architect of this house, although it does appear that he likely ran his practice at the house. It also does not appear that he rises to the level of a master architect. After the Monacos, Karen Delaney lived at the property beginning in 2004, and the current owners purchased the property in 2015. So this is the front facade of the house. It has a hipped-on-gable roof, and it still has its original wood shingle roof. It also has double-hung wood windows with divided lights and a wall dormer, seen in this top picture. And the entire house is clad in stucco. The front door is recessed within its entry. A wood-paneled door with pressed glass leads into the house. And again, we see the divided light, double-hung wood windows. The house is also located at the corner of Chevy Chase Drive and Lath Road with frontages on both sides. And there's this brick pathway at the corner that leads into the backyard. So the top-left picture is the west facade of the house, just before you enter the backyard. It has a single, double-hung wood window. And then the rear facade features similar window types, both single and divided lights. And there's also an outdoor sitting area with a fireplace. And there is also a sign at the rear with Armand Monaco's name with architect written, which is why we believe he likely ran his practice at the house. And this gate leads to Lath Road just behind the house. So this house has also had a number of changes made to the property. The top picture is a picture of the house from circa 1938 in the Chevy Chase Estates brochure. And as you can see, there was originally no half-timbering on the house. That was added at a later date. We can also see the glass block window to the left of the door. The window opening can be seen here, so we assume that it was originally present, but the glass block was added at a later date, since that is more of a modern feature. And then there is also a pair of decorative shutters at the rear facade that was also added at a later date. The chimney was rebuilt in 2003, and it was likely the fireplace was also added at the same time. And then there is a wood fence that was added above the block wall with decorative glass added within the fence, likely at the same time. And again, this is a closer shot of that glass block that was likely added at a later date. And so, applications suggest the property might be significant under Criterion 3 as an excellent example of Tudor Revival architecture and its association with Mr. Monaco. Mr. Monaco was certainly an active architect that worked in the broader LA region, but based on the research we have now, his work does not rise to the level of a master designer. And again, there was no evidence that suggests he was the original architect of the house. And although the house does exhibit some of its character-defining features, such as the wood shingle roof, the stucco exterior, and most of its double-hung wood windows, the changes made to the house have compromised its material and design integrity. And again, the architectural elements don't really stand out from the beginning in a distinct or unique manner in the broader context of Tudor Revival houses we see in Glendale. We hold our Glendale Registered Properties to a certain threshold to meet this criterion, and so staff believes the property does not meet Criterion 3 for listing on the Glendale Register. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions for staff?
Just to clarify, the modifications that are cited are the wood lathing, the glass block, the shutters, and then what else that was?
Fireplace and fence.
The fireplace, of course.
Right.
So those four things.
And that fence.
Oh, the fence on top.
Unlike some other properties that you've reviewed, we don't think that the change alterations themselves are the deal breaker. I'm not sure that this house in general would meet the threshold for meeting.
Those seem pretty easy to, aside from the fireplace, seem pretty easy conditions. Okay.
Okay, with that, I don't have any speaker cards. Did the owner want to speak? You're welcome to.
You don't have to if you don't want to.
May I suggest that you do? And just fill out a speaker card. They're on the table, right behind the partition there.
You can fill out afterward on the way out.
Yeah, hand it to me later.
Hi, I'm Cameron Nadler. I am one of the homeowners, I guess, of the house. And I've never done this, so.
You could just tell us a little bit about why you're bringing this before us?
Mainly bringing it before because it's a very well-known house in the area, especially given where it is, being the main house that you see when you enter Chevy Chase Estates. It's pretty much the. It's pretty much the, like, welcome to Chevy Chase Estates house. And that it was used on the brochure as the poster house for Chevy Chase Estates when it was being sold as that. And everyone in the greater area knows that house, they love it, they like it, you know, it's in a perfect area. It's been very well-maintained over the years. And I also want to keep it so it can stay like that. Because I know that area, I don't know if that area is protected at all. But whether it is or not, I, I know there's been houses there that have been torn down, rebuilt, you know, fixed up to look a particular way, and it totally ruins it. And I want to be sure that this, that never happens to that house, because so many people like it, they love it. Like, oh, I have people stop in front of the house a lot to take pictures of it. And I want to make sure that nothing ever happens to it, which is the main reason why I brought it here, so.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing. Anyone want to start comments?
So he's around the corner right now, but I would like to thank the homeowner for exploring listing the house on the register. Wish I could speak to him directly. I was, I was very happy to hear.
Cameron, come back.
Cameron. I was, I was very happy to hear that, that you learned about the process. You don't have to come to the podium. We're just deliberating. So, so again, I want to thank you for exploring listing your house on the register. And I was happy to hear from you that you had heard about the process through a neighborhood gathering. And I'm just happy to hear that people are talking about preservation when they get together in their neighborhoods. Your house is lovely, and it does have an interesting history, especially that it was, you know, the cover house on the pamphlet for the new development, and that the architect, Armand Monaco, held his office and lived there for many years. I think I do, I do have to agree with the staff report, however. One of the main elements, or an important element in Tudor revival style is that half-timbering. And it does appear that that was not, in fact, originally a part of the house. Again, there are some other changes to the house, a number of windows. I think, I think I also noticed a couple of sliders on the east side that may not have been called out in the staff report. But fundamentally, I think the house just doesn't rise to the exemplary level of high-style representation of that type of house that we typically put on the register. But with that said, and, and I do appreciate your enthusiasm for maintaining the house and protecting it, and I hope you always do. But with those things said, I'll, I'll just defer to my colleagues now for their comments.
Thank you. You're welcome to sit if you'd like.
Oh, yeah, you don't have to sit. Um, yeah, it's a, it's a very charming house, and we really do appreciate that you guys have an appreciation for that. The Mills Act and the historic designation is a very high bar. If it's not something you're already aware of in Glendale, if you haven't sort of followed the process before and heard other people come before with their homes and kind of listened to it, it's, it's easy to think, the house is so cute, it's got so much original charm, and that should be enough. It, it's really not, we really do need a lot of history and a lot of, there have to be some really strong, compelling reasons. To your, to the, to the point about wanting to make sure it never gets torn down, just keep taking really good care of the house. You know, like you're doing, just keep, keep taking really good care of the house, spend some money on it so that the next person to come in, it wouldn't make sense for them to take the house down, because you've done such a beautiful job restoring it, which it sounds like you guys want to do. But again, echoing her words, thank you for bringing it forward and for going through the process. It always helps to have people come forward and, and talk about it and, and keep it alive, so that was great, thank you.
I agree.
Well, thank you again. If there aren't people like you bringing things before us for consideration, then we have no way of seeing what's out there and seeing what might be eligible for the historic register. So we really appreciate your time and effort, and we know it's a lot to fill out that application.
A lot of work.
We'd love that you are so passionate about the house, I loved hearing the stories about it when I came to tour. So I want to say thank you again, and I also agree with staff that this doesn't rise quite to the level. But please enjoy your home, it's beautiful, and you've done a nice job there, and I'm glad you're enjoying living there. Do we have a motion?
Oh, yeah, I move that the historic preservation does not recommend, commission does not recommend designation of this house. Sorry, that was sloppy, but we get the idea, right? Yeah, that one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Vartanian.
Yes.
Commissioner Kragnati.
Yes.
Commissioner Doom.
Yes.
And Chair Shire.
Yes.
4-0 to not recommend designation.
Thank you.
You still don't fill out the card, though.
Yes.
Thank you.
Can't get off the hook.
Okay, item eight is planning division updates and informal briefings. We have 8A, update on the city council hearing regarding South Glendale Community Plan and Historic Resource Survey.
I was hoping to have something more substantive to say tonight. We had a very long discussion at city council about the community plan. The council itself did not discuss the survey as part of the community plan. And it's, and we had to have the survey be part of the community plan, it's very important that it be there. It also wasn't the focal point. We did do briefings with the council members beforehand, so they were definitely aware that that was there. They, they approved the EIR, they approved the environmental review. And the, the historic resource survey was considered as part of the EIR. They did not approve the community plan, and that was part of the staff recommendation. The original community plan, as directed by council, was to consider the highest possible transportation office, not office, um, options, when the community plan was being developed, meaning that there would be a streetcar, there would be high-speed rail, there would be a bus rapid transit line coming through Glendale. And with all of those pieces, the addition of density along these lines would be something that was appropriate with, with greater transportation. So the, the community plan did propose an increase in density of about 10,000 units. The community did not enjoy hearing that, council did not enjoy hearing that, so they directed staff to go back and maintain some of the changes that the community plan envisions. And the two main things that were discussed are the addition of mixed-use zoning along some of our corridors, like Broadway and Colorado, Glendale, I believe. The idea is, under the current zoning, it is impossible for mixed-use development, and we see no reason to not have mixed-use development. The original community plan called for increased density along with that mixed-use development. What we're going to do is revise the document to allow for the mixed use, so that that's as of right in that area, but with the existing densities, there would be no increase in density. The commission, or the council, also looked, focused a lot on the area around Glendale Memorial Hospital and the Transportation Center, the old Santa Fe Railroad Depot. The proposal was to create a transit-oriented district there. Basically, because we do have the train there, we are looking at a streetcar leaving from the train, and we already have extensive bus service coming in and out of that area. In addition, the hospital is mandated by the state to meet various standards that will require new construction within their campus. So the TOD zone will have two separate areas. One will be the area immediately around the campus, the other will be the area, basically, to the west from San Fernando to the, to the train station. And that will allow for enhancements to streetscape, different uses coming in that area. There is a direction to try to avoid having the medical offices fill up that area. So the discussion was very much focused on planning and zoning. There was one speaker at the hearing who was concerned that her property is on the survey right now. And she was concerned that residents there, or owners of those properties, hadn't been notified. Council did not make any statement about that. The planning commission had recommended that all property owners who's, who were going to have properties recognized as fives or six Ls be notified. That's still up in the air, we didn't get direction from council. So we're going to move forward with finalizing the survey, including the, and, and we were hoping to get direction from council on those 12 properties, wherever, can't remember now, it's 21. The, out of the 44 properties, or 43 properties plus one district that were recommended by the Glendale Historical Society at our multiple meetings, we came down to agreement on, on many of those, where the commission either agreed with, with staff and HRG, or agreed with the Historical Society, and we, we balanced things out either way. We did present to council that staff has a very hard time with the houses that have the altered porches, and also the siding, in terms of just our general process with Glendale Register properties. And 1106 Rosboyn is kind of an example of a house where the commission said it's, it's eligible for the register if it has appropriate cladding. It's not eligible if it doesn't have appropriate cladding. So we're going to move forward with recommending that those properties be considered six Ls rather than fives. And we also had trouble with the Milford Historic District. And so we're continuing to recommend that the two, one, one of the buildings is already recommended by everyone as a five. And in fairly recently, it was combined with the next building over to the north, so they're now on one parcel. So that five designation will encompass those two buildings. The one to the north has kind of a plain brick facade, but it is Merrill Barrett Building. And the two other properties, we, the consultant and I just cannot see that as a district, and cannot see them as individually eligible, so we were holding fast on that. I'm putting this out publicly. The council did not give us direction on that, so we're, so we're going to move forward. But all, all surveys are, are amendable in the future, as directed either by political forces or by, by, you know, observations that there was something that wasn't, that wasn't studied correctly in the survey. So, so that's a very few, a very, just a few properties where there was that level of disagreement, so.
Okay.
And going into the council hearing, I kind of knew we weren't going to get any answers, but I was really still hopeful. And it didn't, it didn't happen, so. So that's my update.
Can I ask you a question about your update?
Sure.
You said you didn't get direction from council, but you're still going forward. What would you be going forward with?
With the recommendation that some of these properties be six Ls rather than five S3s.
And at a later.
The 44 that we considered with the, with the, in our discussions with the Historical Society.
And then at a later date, you hope you'll get direction from the council?
Possibility.
Does it matter?
Perhaps council will be lobbied, and, and this, this issue will come to the forefront, rather than being left kind of in the background of this whole discussion. So I, I see various possible outcomes, I'm not sure what the mechanism would be. And it could be that the survey stays the way we're proposing it.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll open the public hearing, we have one speaker card, Catherine Yurka.
Hello again, Catherine Yurka from the Glendale Historical Society. It was, I, I know that I don't have the right to ask, well, I guess I can ask questions, I just can't compel answers. Yeah, I know. I was just curious, some of the properties that had, where there was agreement between the HPC, staff, and HRG, like the American Mediciel Building, that Streamline Modern industrial building on Broadway, those had been agreed upon so long ago, I'm just wondering why.
Really, it's only at the last round of discussion.
But if you think about when this, but that was so long before the, the deadline, I mean, that was months ago, I'm just curious why.
We had, we had the, this was all out for review as part of the draft EIR.
But, but I believe at the meeting, HRG had come around when there was the commission meeting. And then there was, I'm just wondering why the properties where there was agreement weren't added to the survey, given that there's still no DPR forms.
We made a decision to, because it was going to start getting confusing if we're changing the survey here and not changing it there, the decision was made going to council that the survey itself, and you're talking about just the spreadsheet?
Well, that's all we have, yeah.
But the spreadsheet wasn't changed, but that's why we wrote very specifically in the staff report, we brought it down to a property-by-property level, and we gave council pictures of each of the properties that were in, that were finally disagreed about.
Right, I, I guess I was just surprised that the ones that there was, because there were so few, I think there were like six or seven, where there was uniform agreement, that agreement had been reached. Like, I, I just didn't feel like it was that confusing for those to be added, but.
It was just, just for efficiency's sake.
Okay.
There was no subterfuge or anything, it was basically, if it doesn't impact anything.
Okay.
We've all agreed that that.
Yeah, I mean, there's substantial evidence at this point, a phrase that I've become very familiar with. The, the other thing I was, I was just wanted to ask about was the flagging of the properties.
That process will begin now, we're going to work with HRG to get the DPRs, which they've already been working on, so we're going to get the DPRs finalized. We need to get the, we don't have the spreadsheet right now from them of the final version, we just have a PDF form of that. So we're going to get the spreadsheet, and possibly within two weeks, three weeks, we can get those flagged.
Okay.
That's our goal, we're going to get them flagged, even if we don't have the DPRs, and then we'll add the DPRs later.
Okay, okay, that's.
Our goal is to jump on it now that we have this meeting behind us.
Okay, okay, and I have one other question, but I'm going to ask it off the record. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other discussion?
God, the suspense is killing everyone.
Okay, with, if there's no other discussion, then that adjourns our meeting. The time is 7:31.